August 12th, 2025, City of Bloomfield Hills, City Commission Meeting. Please rise to say the pleasure of allegiance.
Aye.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Before we start the meeting, I would like to make, take a moment to acknowledge the passing of David Kellett, a former city commissioner and mayor of Bloomfield Hills. Dave served our city for many years with roles on the zoning board of appeals, the planning commission, and three consecutive terms on the city commission, including mayor as mayor in 2009. His steady presence and longstanding commitment to civic service were part of our city's evolution. On a personal note, Dave was also the builder of our first family home in Bloomfield Hills. He built many other homes in our fine city. Today, I'd like, we'd like to remember and honor his many contributions to Bloomfield Hills and extend our deepest condolences to his family. Next, I would like to, the commission now hear introduction from Chief King welcoming Public Safety Officer Brett Buckley back to me.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Fisher, Mayor Protam McCarthy, Commissioners Baxter Buckley and Fisher, City Managers Hendrickson, City Staff. It is my pleasure to introduce Brett Buckley, our newest member of the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department. In addition to being an exceptionally qualified candidate, PSO Buckley represents our 25th sworn member, bringing our agency to a fully authorized staffing level. We previously hired a 24th sworn member, PSO Jacob Dickey, who is scheduled to be introduced to this commission at October's meeting. He is currently completing his training at the Oakland Police Academy and upon his graduation and subsequent completion of our field training program, which is anticipated in early of 2026. That will bring the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department to a fully, fully staffed level at an operational, at operational levels, the first time in over a decade. This is a point of extreme pride for our department from both a local and a national standpoint. A recent national IACP study indicated that approximately seven, 70% of all public safety departments across our nation are understaffed, 10% or greater. Locally, no public safety department in the area has accomplished a staffing level at either an operational or authorized level. But back to PSO Buckley. Brett graduated from Flushing High School in 2008. He attended Mott Community College pursuing a degree in criminal justice before beginning his public safety career. Brett achieved his state certifications as a firefighter one and two and in hazmat operations after graduating from the Genesee County Fire Academy in 2008. He obtained his state law enforcement license after graduating in 2025 from the Mott Community College Police Academy. Before joining our department, Brett has an extensive and distinguished career in public safety. Brett began his public safety service career with the Flushing Fire Department in 2008 as an on-call firefighter and continues in that capacity today. Brett served with the Genesee County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer from 2013 through 2014. Brett joined the Flint Township Fire Department in 2019, where he earned promotions to the rank of sergeant, fire marshal, assistant chief, and eventually chief of the fire department in 2023. Brett then transitioned to the Bishop International Airport Public Safety Department, where he worked as a public safety officer, covering both fire and law enforcement duties. Brett made an exceptional decision to then now join the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department, the best public safety department on the face of this earth.
Agreed.
Brett has been described as a thorough, hardworking, professional with unquestionable integrity, a passion for public safety, and a passion for his family. Earlier this month, Clerk Burton administered Brett his official oath of office as he began his FTO program. At this time, I would like to call forward Brett's family, including his son Brock, who will pin his badge.
Good job.
Hey, welcome.
We have to talk. I'm from Flushing. And my dad worked for the official airport.
Oh, I've seen this.
We'll talk. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I promise you, I'm going to be way shorter than chief. I just want to say thank you, first off, to my family. Without them, I would not, I would not be here. You know, my dad's a distinguished 30-year firefighter. I'm a, you know, a third-generation firefighter. My entire family's in public safety and, you know, this is just the path that I had to go down. So, you know, but without my wife, my sons, you know, everybody's, you know, everyone's, everyone's help, I would not have been able to make this transition and thank you. You know, obviously, thanks, chief, and the entire city. This is a beautiful place and I'm very, very excited to be here. Thank you.
Happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Oh, that was nice. Okay, okay, thank you.
We'll now review the consent agenda. Get back to regular business. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Getting back to regular business, consent agenda. Any questions or discussion regarding items listed?
I have just a couple, Mayor. Sandra, we talked about this before. I just get, I forgot what you said. On bond refund, what is our repayment? When, do we do it on a quarterly basis? Is it a schedule? Is it when they're closed? What do we, how do we do that?
So, I think you're referring to all the bond refunds that are mentioned on the cash or on the check register. So, there is a little bit of confusion and we're kind of working through this process. But when you see Hubble, Roth, and Clark or Gippels, those aren't actually bond refunds, they're escrow payments.
Okay.
But without getting into the weeds of the situation, our program doesn't allow us to do it as an escrow. It is done as a bond refund. So, we're looking at a way to change it so that it lists at least the permit number. You can see some of them do list the permit number.
Yeah.
So, I apologize for the confusion with it saying bond refund. But to answer your question, we are trying to do bond refunds.
Yeah, because that's, escrow and bond refund are two different things.
They're two different things.
One's bringing in money, the other one's taking it out.
Well, we collect bond money and we hold it. And if there's nothing that occurs, road damage or anything like that, then we return the full amount. And there are a few in here, but it wouldn't be for a Hubble, Roth, and Clark or for Gippels. That's all escrow. So, I am working through that. So, it's a good question. Because I know there's quite a few.
All right. I wondered about that. And then my other question I had for you was, I saw you made a payment for the Farmington Hill, for the farming, Evergreen Farmington Sanitary Drain. Is that a one-time payment? Is that more coming up or?
No, that was what was approved, I believe, in June.
That's page eight of 10.
We had to do a prepay for our portion.
So, how much more do we owe?
That is it for this time, yes.
That's it.
For this project.
That's all of that. Okay, and then, oh, oh, Chief's not here. Dave, just please, I really liked the major incident summary.
Yeah.
We haven't had that before and I really, I like that. It was, it's good to know. And so, I really liked his, his summary, this, this, if he can continue with that kind of format, if it's something, you know, I know not major things, but that's good to know. Also comment just on the building, you know, the, lots of construction going on with the city, so I'm sure that's really busy. We don't have.
An engineer?
Yeah.
No, Jamie had to leave. He had something, middle of the meeting, he had to leave. So, he had to, I'm sorry, but maybe, maybe I can ask.
All right. So, on the Chesterfield culvert, again, I know we keep talking about this, but this has been the longest planned culvert.
Yes.
Ever. So, it says each tribal government has 30 days to comment or engage in consultation with the city on cultural resources concerns over the project. So, are we in that 30-day period then, that there'll be?
Yes, we are. So, yeah, so there's an archaeologist that has to dig to see if they find anything. They didn't find anything.
Oh, okay.
And part, part of this whole process, this governmental process, is to send letters out to the different tribal organizations and they can look at the archaeologist's report and they can, they have 30 days to comment.
Okay.
If they believe it's appropriate or not. So, it's just part of the process. I know that, we are, you know, we're just, we're following the process as it goes. I know it's one-time.
Well, you have a grant. We have to follow the, that's fine. Okay. That's good to know.
Thank you for jumping through all the hoops.
Yeah, thank you. That was all I had.
I just had one. Amy, Amy made a change, I think, to the minutes. I don't know. Amy, did we get a corrected version?
I apologize, Commissioner, I did not put them out, but yes, I did accept your change. So, if you'd like to present it to the commission, I agree with it.
Yes, the change I proposed was under the sanitary sewer rehab project, the motion that Commissioner McCarthy made. I think I added a little bit to it. And at the end of this, it says, the project within the city not to exceed the bid amount of $509,879.50. And then it says, subject to the contractor signing the necessary insurance certificates. I propose that instead of signing, we say providing, because they should be providing us with the certificates of insurance to show that they have the proper coverages. So, Amy was going to, is going to make that change, provided everyone agrees.
That was my mistake. I did listen back to the recording and that was the appropriate word. So, I apologize, I didn't get it prepared.
Thank you, Amy.
May I add two quick questions? First one may be for Sandra. What's the Man Queen Vence Consulting Contract?
That is our, we have a consulting firm for our benefits.
Got it. That makes sense.
So, they've been for many years and we pay them quarterly for their services.
And then this one's probably for Dave. The Safe Built, that's, that's, what exactly does that service provide? Because that's a, that's a monthly thing that, it's an, it's an expensive service, but it's, I'm sure it's important. I just don't know what it is.
It's, it's, so we, we have a subcontract to the building official. And I don't know if you made, read my latest report, but we're looking to get away from that. We, we believe we can pay probably 15% to 20% less if we had someone on staff. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a big-ticket item. They provide the building official, but they also provide an electrical inspector. That does, that's not, that doesn't cost the city because we're able to use permit fees. They have agreed to take the permit fees for the electrical. That's the cost for, for the, for the electrical inspector. But I'm going to review that also. And finally, we have a fire marshal, which I'm also going to review, because I think we have a very accomplished fire, or experienced fire marshal. But we are experiencing some delays in, in service with him too. So, we're going to review that also.
Is that something in conjunction with the new PSO? I mean, Brett seems very.
Oh, is it fire marshal? Yeah, he probably has the experience and maybe we can do something like that. We did something like that before, but to your point, we never really had anybody that trained. So, we're, we'll look at different options.
He seems really experienced.
Yeah, he does.
At least could help us.
Probably a matter of bandwidth, what he's able to do.
Yeah. Well, he's new, so he has to go through his programs.
He could help us advise us in a new person or additional.
But we'll look at options.
Great.
No, I get it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else?
I just, Chief King, you were gone, but I just wanted to say that I really liked your report. I loved, I liked the added of, you know, activity in the city and everything. I thought it was very thorough and so, well done. And keep, you know, continuing with.
Now, we will open the floor for public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record and three minutes.
That is.
All enough.
Yes.
Okay.
When we had the Cranbrook and Brady Lane signs made, we asked the manufacturer this EF, whatever it is, to.
EF Anderson.
Yeah, EF Anderson, to provide us with appropriate font. And then I called back and found out that's what the font was. So, they created that with appropriate font, but they did create it with a three-inch letter and not a four-inch.
So, maybe before we vote on this, we should see one more sample. Doesn't have to be all mocked up in a criscus, but just a blade showing the font appropriate size.
Blade, that's the term, the blade. Well, I mean, I guess, yeah, we certainly can do that, but I mean, at the end of the day, if we're going to be as compliant as possible, it would have to be four inches tall.
Well, and it may have to be larger depending upon where the sign is located. Because it says, it could be up to eight inches or 12, if it's, if it's on a more than 40 mile-per-hour street, it has to be eight inches.
Right. All our residential streets.
We don't have any over 40.
Well, on Woodward, along Woodward.
But that's, we don't, we don't own Woodward though, right?
Trowbridge sign, our Trowbridge sign is on Woodward.
We do have signs on Woodward. The majority of, I think the 25 miles an hour and under is a four-inch letter. But you're right, the over 25 or something like the 40 miles an hour has.
Yeah, 25 miles per hour, less is four. 40 miles or less is six.
Even if you're turning onto a 25 mile an hour.
More than 40.
It has to adhere to the Woodward speed limit requirement.
That's the road that we're seeing the sign from, at speed. So, it needs to be a certain size.
Because it's because of the speed. You know, you're going to need bigger letters, I guess, to see something.
So, can I ask the, for example, Rudd Gate where I live, the, the letters are not four inches, they're something smaller. I don't know what the dimension is.
Yeah, I hope I have two and a half.
Do we know offhand what the dimension is?
Smaller than three. I think you're right. They're two and a half. They were, they were not right.
So, I guess my only thought is, I mean, I like the metal. I understand the reason for the metal maintenance and all that. Even though it's recommended to be four, can't we agree that maybe it could be something other than four? Because four, on some of those small, the, I guess my only point is, is a lot of those street signs which are, which are quiet, you know, they're kind of smaller. We're going to go from two to four.
We're going to get a lot of noise from residents.
That's going to look really loud on a 25 mile-an-hour street.
Now, I'm glad you put it out.
And I'm, I'm, I'm for new signs. I'm for signs that are reflective, which we don't have today.
Right.
I just think that there is a, there should be a sensitivity towards scale only because you don't need something really loud. And loud would be big.
Like Bennington is, we have like 10 houses on it and you're going to have, Bennington's going to be like this on that little, you know what I mean? It's like Trowbridge.
I guess I'm saying it specifically to the residential streets. Streets that have a Woodward impact and such, you know, I'm not discuss, I'm not really addressing that. It's, it's the interior streets that are quieter.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you go to, if you go to three to four, you're compliant with the law. And so, that might be something that may be a consideration. If it's retroreflective, it's compliant with the law. If it's, if it's this font, I believe it's compliant. If you shrink it down for any reason, it's not compliant.
So, all the streets, so a lot of the old street signs we have today are not compliant?
They are not compliant.
I don't think any of them are.
So, I mean, I guess the commission would have to decide if, if we're going to take this stuff, or if you're going to take this stuff to replace them as needed, would you replace them with something that's compliant currently?
I guess I'm supportive of an incremental improvement. I wouldn't want to go bananas.
I think we all agree to that. But it's going to be awkward if, if one sign is different than the rest in the neighborhood.
Yeah, we're not, we're not solving for anything if we do this. If we do incrementally, then we're just going to, we're adding just yet another different sign to what's already out there.
Well, we definitely have to do incremental.
Well, we do, but not, I think we should do it within a set period of time because you're not solving anything. It's, well, there'll be 20 years from now, there'll still be wood signs and these signs and a new commission and something else.
No, we have, we have a standard manufacturer, which is up on us.
The brackets, just so you know, if, if the commission was to decide that they like the brackets and the current size of pole that we use, that bracket fits the pole. I know Jamie checked with this EF Anderson and they would have to order all these brackets and it takes five months to get them. So, it's kind of one of the reasons why I'm trying to bring it back up, because if that's the direction the commission wants to take, especially with the brackets, then we can order them.
These brackets, we could adhere to our existing poles?
Yes.
Because that was a problem with the other manufacturer.
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, so we'd have to buy three-inch poles for the other manufacturer for the.
Right.
This manufacturer here. That takes a two-and-three-eighths pole, which Jamie has a stock of them and.
And I think we talked about being able to buy in bulk. We are only going to replace them incrementally, but at least we get a bulk price, correct?
Well, yeah, and I recommend if, I don't know about the signs, we can always get the signs made as we need them, but I would recommend that if the commission believes that those brackets are something you want to have for the future, that we would order a lot of them, because it does take a long time to get. And then we stock up on, he would stock up on it. He would have them with his poles and as we need signs, we could order the signs as needed and get them replaced.
Well, yeah, I really like the bracket. It represents and matches exactly what was originally in the city, so.
Are you talking about the Cranbrook bracket or the Trowbridge bracket?
Yeah, the Cranbrook.
Okay.
Actually, actually, in the, that exact bracket, the Cranbrook, Brady Lane bracket, is in, is in Pine Ridge neighborhood. It's the same bracket.
Oh, good.
I think one thing we might have to, well, I tend, tend to agree that four inches would be too, too loud and too abrupt. I think we would get a lot of pushback from that.
Oh, yeah.
Three inches is probably about as far as we could go, but I think that's a reasonable size compromise.
I would agree.
I agree that it's four inches is, at Trow, Trowbridge or that's even bigger or even Bennington, it's like, that's going to be a monster on the street.
I mean, if it ever really became.
All residents are going to be.
Oh, yeah.
If it ever became a major issue, which I don't think it would, you would be replacing blades, which is not a terrible thing.
Yeah, and then I know that you had, we talked about some sort of bracket for the, for the end of it and Bishop Baxter had mentioned it, you might be able to look at a way to manufacture some brackets.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I just, I think it gives it a nice finished look. And that's how the originals were.
I would prefer that.
That kind of squares off the ends.
Yes.
You're going to make these in your basement and share time?
Yeah, I'm going to hammer them out one by one.
There's your factory on the side project. That's great. Thank you.
That's great.
So, even if you had the curved ends, if you had a bracket that was squared off.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. I think, you know, what the curved end bracket would square it out.
You're hurting gifts.
We could find somebody.
They're radius, it's probably a stamp.
Standard.
Probably stamp those. Well, it sounds like that this, the brackets from EF Anderson would be the way to go. And if, you know, behind the scenes, if, if someone wants to let me know about the actual lettering and all that, I can, I, we can do that offline.
Sure.
And then as far as the brackets too.
We'll consider.
I don't really need a vote or anything. I just need a.
Good, very good.
So, you have a good direction?
Yeah, I just need some direction.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yep.
Okay, the commission will now consider the updated proposal from Ncode Plus Ordnance and Services.
So, the commission challenged Amy and I with updating the prices and features of the Ncode Plus program, which is a zoning code reorganization program. So, we were able to get the president online and we, Amy and I met with them and we went through all the features that they have. And I don't know if the commission had a chance to review some of these features. I know Amy spent a lot of time looking at these features. She actually spent more time than me looking at this and making, she, she has probably a broader understanding of what really, really is need. And so, Amy, I don't know if you want to comment on this, if you wouldn't mind.
No, not at all. So, you know, the commission saw the presentation and I think what I took away from the last conversation was direction for Dave and I to really evaluate what we could see as being helpful for staff and residents and people that use our code the most. And I think I mentioned at one of these discussions that I get daily calls about our code. So, the opportunity to improve the system and the way that people use it is welcomed. The front of the memo lists the items that we focused on with the contractor and a few of these are, we have to have. The cloud library and the auto notification were things that were part of the proposal with, at zero cost. When it all came down to it and we had our conversation, the contractor, the vendor was really able to sharpen his pencil and we got down to only a first year total cost of $47,990. That includes everything you see on the front page in addition to the algebraic formula setback calculator, which was one of those special features that I think Mayor Fisher had asked if this contractor could do. After year one, the, the vendor offered to really take his, his annual cost from $13,000 down to $3,700 every year after. So, while, while we don't have a contract, I think Dave and I had thought that perhaps bringing a contract back to the city commission, once you have this discussion today, would be a viable option to see at what point they're willing to keep that $3,700 annual cost after year one. But everything that's included is valuable to the bells and whistles that you saw in the last presentation. So, the opportunity to have the archive manager, so you could go back to any point in time of when the code was adopted and you could see what code was in place in a specific year. So, this comes into play, today's planning commission, we talked about a project that was non-conforming. We could easily go back to when that building was built and see the code that was in place at that time. We can do that now, it's just a lot more laborious with the way that we have it. So, that archive manager is a great feature. The e-reader is for like mobile and tablet devices. So, that's something that most people are using now to look up a code. A lot of people will stand in the lobby and scroll on their cell phone when we give them a reference to a code. So, I think that's important. The code navigator really is a feature that allows a user that may not be familiar with a code, and it's a step-by-step walkthrough when you log on the website. It's almost like a AI prompt that lets you input what you're looking to do and it will walk you through where to go and guide you through that online access. The GIS online zoning map is what the bells and whistles that we saw in the presentation were. You could zoom in on a parcel, you could see the zoning for that parcel, you could see what the setbacks were, and you could see that 3D image that he zoomed and showed us. So, that's what that GIS zoning map is.
I recall the 3D image was extensive and takes time and was more expensive possibly. But we're a small city, so is, is that?
Yeah, that's why he really, I think, offered to cut down some prices. So, Dave did a great job in that conversation. We each have our strengths, right? And that was certainly his strength in the conversation. I wanted to know the details of how it functioned and Dave talked about the price. So, he agreed to do that for zero annual cost.
Good.
Good.
So, can I ask, the 3,700 is like a maintenance to, to keep the system?
All of us.
And that includes if we had changes, they update codes and such?
Well, no. This, if we do update codes, it's, is it?
Per page.
Per page. Per page, $22, I think, or something like that, or $1.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, so it is a per page?
I believe it is.
Both of them were per page, yes.
And we can't do it ourselves? I thought we could do it ourselves.
No.
No.
We, right now, even the current code that we have, it's not, we do not do it ourselves. You hire the contractor to make sure that the ordinance is put in the correct place You hire the contractor to make sure that the ordinance is put in the correct place and all the references are checked out. So, a lot of our ordinances, I'm sure you recognize me, if you adopt an ordinance that affects the accessory structures, it may also refer to schedule of regulations. So, that part of it is really critical to make sure that someone that does this is doing it appropriately. So, for each vendor that we brought back to the commission, there was a per-page charge, and each of the proposals that we presented to you were cheaper than the way we currently do it for a per-page charge.
Great. So, we should have all our ordinances buttoned up before we do this?
It's an ongoing thing. It's, one of the things I liked about them is it was not a big deal. I'll have this thing turned around in days, whereas right now, we wait months.
Wow.
So, it's, and what's the term that they use when you?
So, we codify annually.
Codify.
With this company, they would codify, as soon as you adopt an ordinance, I think it's 30 days that it'll be codified. So, there's no lag time when people, developers are using our ordinance, and you adopt plant materials ordinance. In 30 days, you're going to be able to go in and see, whereas our current ordinance, you'd have to let the user know, hey, we made a change here. Be sure to look at the new, the new ordinance. That won't be the case anymore if we were to go with either one of the platforms that we presented to you. It would be an immediate.
Okay, so even if we are, if we are updating the plant materials ordinance, we'd have to pay the old company to change it, and then this company would implement the new one revised by the old company. So, it doesn't make sense? Did you see what I'm saying?
I'm not following you.
So, right now, can we change an ordinance and, and without paying a per-page thing to our current, you know, equivalent?
We don't pay a per-page, but we do pay an annual fee for them to do this.
Well, while we're in that one-year period, we're pretty close on a couple ordinances. Doesn't it make sense to get them in before?
I think I understand your question. So, there's a fee that we pay annually to codify currently.
Okay.
But there's also a fee that we pay every time you adopt an ordinance. So.
Change or adopt a new one?
The same.
Same thing?
Yeah. So, if you, next month, the city commission adopts the plant material ordinance, and I send this out to the company that we currently use because we haven't changed yet to ENCODE, when we, if we change to ENCODE, that will be part of the ordinance. They won't have to redo it because it's already there. So, that will not be a double charge. This company, I will send it right away. It will be part of it. When ENCODE comes on, it's part of the project. It's not going to be an extra charge. It's already in the ordinance then.
So, it does behoove us to get that in now?
There's, yeah, I don't see the, the code is a living document. I don't see that you're ever going to be able to pick a point in time and say, this is the perfect time to do it, because there's always opportunity to make changes. So, I think,
Right.
I don't think there's a problem with that.
Well, the cost seems relatively minimal compared to the opportunity cost of not having it available. You know, if you're waiting for whatever ordinances to be updated and take six months, the last six months that you weren't able to use the the new software, so there's got to be some opportunity cost.
It literally is probably going to cost $200 to update the plant material.
Okay, so don't worry about it. Okay.
Yeah, okay. No, this sounds good. I'm, I'm, let's.
Are there any elements of all of, all of the contract that you don't think we need or you think is something we could live without or is too expensive to implement?
Not because he was willing to cut the annual cost. So, I feel like when you look at the difference between the, the previous quote that we brought to was $45,110 for year one. The current proposal is $47,990. But then that's offset by the annual year-after cost. I feel like it, every, there's value in every platform that they offer, and because he was willing to cut those annual costs, I think it makes sense to go with the full product. If we see, and I think Dave and I talked about this, if after a year or two, we kind of see, oh, no one's really using this feature, or we don't find that it's functional for us, I think we can always reevaluate those add-ons.
Okay.
Great.
Good.
Thank you for all your research and meeting with them and getting all the bids quotes appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you need a vote from us or just a direction?
I don't think we need a, I don't think we need a vote from this. This, just if you agree with this.
That's good.
Or do you want me to say my motion to select ENCODE Plus?
Mark, do we need, I mean?
Well, you don't need a motion to adopt a contract, but if there's a direction to, you know, just move ahead and get a contract, proposed contract underway, if you don't need a motion, there's no harm in doing it though either.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that we would probably do next month is we'd bring a contract back, but we would have a bar review at first, and then bring it back to you if you have questions or any modifications. But there is also, I think there's something in the budget some time ago to do this, but there's nothing in the budget now, so Sandra would have to also bring the budget in. And we believe we can, this, this legitimately can be paid for through building funds and the other funds.
Yeah, I'll build this.
So, I'll make a motion.
It's nice to have it give back to the residents. It'll be a great tool for the residents and builders.
Yes.
And it's apples to apples, so I like that. Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to move forward with having, getting a contract with ENCODE Plus Ordinance Services based on the information given to us today for the negotiated current rate of year one, $47,990 in annual fee, year, annual fee after year one is $3,700.
One second.
Can I second that?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Great. Thank you for moving forward with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The commission will now consider approval for the polling location for Precinct Two for the November 4th, 2025 election.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who are there at planning commission, I had to step out because this was new information to me. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll kind of walk through the situation that we find ourselves. So, for the last 20 years, we've had Precinct Two polling location at the Congregational Church of Birmingham, which is at 1,000 Cranbrook Road. It's been a great relationship. We, when I, I was probably here about five years when we moved from Cranbrook Boys School over to Congregational Church. So, I am familiar with having to change a polling location, although I wish we didn't have to because it's a wonderful building. They have been so accommodating, and it provides a great service for the residents, easy access, and it's loc, it checks all the boxes. So, they are going through a situation at their church building where they cannot offer the space for us at this time. They are determining what they're going to do with their property, and so they can't offer us, they can't commit to us that the building will be available in November. Election law requires several things to be considered when you're establishing a polling location, and I outlined it in that memo. I realized I didn't give you an opportunity to review it, but one of the critical points is that I have 60 days for, to ask the city commission to establish a polling location. So, given that timing, you will not have another meeting before that 60 days is up. So, what I'm asking you today is if you could approve four locations and for me to determine between those four locations which works best to serve the voters of Precinct Two. And I listed on there the Kingsley Inn, the Open Hunt Club, the Village Club, and the Unitarian Church on, out Woodward. So, election law, and I have it in the memo, requires first that it should be a public building in that precinct location if that is available. And so, there's specific language about if that is not available, then what I need to consider. So, at this point, the Kingsley Inn is available, but that was the only one I had time to talk with. So, because of the timing and the requirement of the city commission to make this vote, I wanted to see if there's any questions that you had, but if you would authorize me to determine between those four locations which was the best to serve the voters on November 4th for Precinct Two.
So, Precinct Two, can you just kind of give me a general direct, where's the outline?
Sure. So, if you're looking, if you're considering the map of Bloomfield Hills from basically Long Lake down Woodward to Corton, and then over to just kind of cutting out Trowbridge, everything in that southern part of the southern, western part of the city is Precinct Two. Everything else is Precinct One, so.
Your neighborhood, yeah, our old neighborhood.
Yeah, so, can I give a recommendation? It should be in the, like, near the precinct?
So, it has to be in the precinct. Yeah, so I guess maybe let me explain why I put those other ones on there. I didn't do a good job of that. So, election law recently has changed so that you, right now, you have to have, a precinct can only have 2,999 voters in it. That was last year. Now, you can have 4,999 voters in a precinct. So, the reason why I left those other two options on there is that I could have the entire voters of the city in one precinct if that was the only option available. That's not my preference at this point, but I need to give myself options considering that we only have 60 days. So, if I put all of the voters in one precinct, then it could be anywhere in the city, and it doesn't have to be in Precinct Two. So, Precinct Two are, the two options are the Kingsley Hotel and the Unitarian Church.
Oh, so if you keep it separate?
Yes.
Your point being, if you keep one, and you have two different voting places, one's in Precinct One and one in Precinct Two?
Yes.
Or you just combine them all and have it anywhere in the city?
Yes.
Probably, yeah. Okay.
And what's the advantage to having two? Just there's more lines are divided. There's not as long of a wait?
I think, so what we saw last year was the first year that we had a presidential election with early voting, and what we saw is that election day actually became not a very busy day. It became much more, much less busy than the nine days leading up to election day because of early voting. This, this election's going to be difficult because it is just a city commission, and there is a school proposal, Bloomfield Hills School proposal on the ballot. So, it's not going to be the turnout we had in November. But what we saw on election day is very short lines. People, there was a lot of times where the election inspectors were not busy at all and didn't have any voters. So, there is some benefit to combining them because of early voting. The other benefit is obviously cost savings. I would have less employees, less election inspectors, less equipment. We already have the equipment, so that, that is really not an issue, but it's something to consider. At this point, the reason why I'm asking it is because it's such a new piece of information for me. I needed to give myself options and because of the timing of your meeting.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot, and all of those things, I mean, parking is a really big deal. ADA accessibility is a really big deal. So, there's a lot of things that need to be considered. The Kingsley Inn is a decent option. I went there today. I looked at the space, kind of thinking that I'm going to need, based on the phone call I had this morning, and I was hopeful that they would still let me use it in November, but that doesn't seem to be the case, so.
The Kingsley Inn is not allowing you?
No, the church. I thought this morning, and
Oh, okay.
convinced them to let me use it in November.
I think you're, well done. You're really thinking this through and thinking about, you know, voting has changed. You know, people vote early. They don't just vote on the same day, and it is a big expense for us to have two different polling. So, yeah, I,
So, even for this, this smaller election, you'll have the nine days in advance to vote?
Um, no, I will not have the nine days. So, there, you may recall when we first did early voting for that first city commission election, we didn't have early voting for city commission.
Right, I thought it was just, yeah.
Right. And because we didn't join the early voting consortium with the county, we're not obligated to participate in their early voting locations. So, the city commission made the decision to do early voting on their own, separate from the county, which I think we heard from the voters was really a welcome choice.
Remind me again, though, we have a, what percent of people vote absentee in our city?
Um, for the, using the presidential election, it was around 65% last November.
That's huge.
So, when I look at, just one more piece of information. When I look at the voters from the last city commission election, in Precinct Two, we only had 307 votes for Precinct Two. So, when I consider, I have an obligation to notify the voters in that precinct that their precinct location will change, and we will follow the law, and we will do more. We will do an exceptional job of getting notice out there. And also, I would plan to have people stationed at the old location with permission from the church so that they can direct to where they need to go. But if we're really only talking about 300 or 400 people, it's not as impactful as if it was a presidential election and the impact of voters for this election.
You mean, our vote, our, our commission race isn't, is just,
For those 300 people that come out to vote for you.
Exactly.
So, you would recommend we switch it to the Kingsley Inn?
I recommend that you give me,
She wants to see people to make the decision.
Oh, absolutely. Okay.
So, of those four, if you could just give me authorization to decide which one of those four within the 60-day timeframe, which is September 5th.
Do we need to vote, or you want us just to say?
Yes, we need to vote.
So, we have your motion?
I'll move. I move that we approve the use of any one of the following locations to be used as a polling location with a final determination to be made by the city clerk before, before Friday, September 5th, 2025, which is 60 days before the November 4th, 2024 election. Birmingham Unitarian Church, the Kingsley Inn, the Village Club, or the Bloomfield Open Hunt Club.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Okay, the commission will now hear the manager's comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things. I know that, Mayor, you actually had mentioned that the city may want to get involved in the Arbor Day Foundation. And so, we, we looked into that, and one of the things that's required is that the city commission would have to adopt a proclamation for Arbor Day. The city would have to have an Arbor Day event.
Oh, that's not, yeah.
And in addition, we'd have to install Tree City USA signs in the city once the application is approved. So, it just didn't seem like it was,
Not a good fit.
Okay, so move, move that to the side. I want to let you know that I don't think we've had much response from our assessing. Yeah, I don't, when, when is that date?
Thursday. It's 3:00 on Thursdays.
Sometimes, you know, we'll, we'll get bids come in, but it's not looking very promising. So, the September agenda, we'll bring it back to you with what happened with our request for proposals. If we don't get any, we're going to, we're going to have to move forward with using the counties or state with the county for assessing. And that's about all I had, really, I think.
Okay. Other business, I, it was brought to my attention when I was looking at properties for the planning person that there were signs, the Cranbrook Homes builder had huge signs close to the road, visible from Long Lake, that were colorful, not black and gold, and I just hope we can, you know, out of courtesy to all the neighbors who have to live through all of that construction that maybe, you know, we ask them to move their signs back and make the long history.
Yeah, we will, we will take care of that.
Thank you so much. Any other further business? Anyone?
I mean, it includes the size of these, some of these signs. I think some of these people are taking liberty of, you know what I mean?
Twelve foot max, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's a 12-square feet and 25 feet back from the road's edge. So, we did go through the whole city and look at it, but, and every time we have a construction site, we communicate that, but it can absolutely slip through the cracks, and we will do another survey of the city.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, there's no further business? May someone like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Okay, the city meeting is adjourned. Our, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Thank you, everyone.